It's the October 7th, 2019, meeting of the school committee of the town of Foxborough. And we have a very interesting agenda tonight. Do we have anyone here for our open public comment section? All right. If nobody's here, we'll move on to approval of minutes. And we have a couple of different minutes to take a look at. We have, starting with our September 23rd, 2019 special meeting minutes. Does anyone have any comments, changes, or additions to that?
I move to approve the September 23rd special meeting minutes as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Richard. Is there any further comment? Okay. All those in favor?
Five, zero, zero.
Thank you. And thank you, Richard, for taking the minutes. And now we'll take a look at our September 16th, 2019 regular meeting minutes. This is a long meeting. Does anyone have any additions, subtractions, comments on these meeting minutes?
I'd move to approve the September 16th.
I do have one question.
Yes.
I'm a stickler on words and language.
All right.
Let me s- wait a minute.
What page are we on, Beth?
I am on the very first page.
Okay.
To me, the word "several," it is underneath the Australian trip up from the bottom. Several times, to me, indicates several. I believe hail has come only twice to us. I mean, several people have gone to France on exchange. Several groups have gone to Spain on exchange. I'd rather have it reflect a smaller number than several. I mean, isn't it twice that the hail?
Twice, right, Diana?
The hail school's been here twice.
Could be three times.
Maybe three.
I know they were here twice when my son was here, but I thought they came prior to that.
Did you say multiple? So it's more ambiguous?
Multiple.
Yeah, several just, I mean, Australian high school kids don't have piles of thousands of dollars to run over several times. I mean, multiple?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay.
Sure.
If you don't, sorry.
No, that's certainly five.
I still would rather have the exact number, but...
Well, perhaps could we check on that with Kami Tadold?
Three times, I would like it to reflect three times.
Janet, if you'll make that change to the accurate number, then are we okay with everything else?
Yes.
All right.
So I'd move to approve the September 16th minutes with the accurate statement for how many times Hale has visited.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Bobby. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Five, zero, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving right along. We're a couple of minutes ahead of schedule, but I see our new athletic director is here. Our next agenda item is our teaching and learning highlight, our new athletic director. Joe, would you like to come up to the table? And Amy, would you like to introduce?
I would be happy to. So many of you know Coach Cusack from either from soccer or from cross-country. He has joined us as athletic director with our opening, so it's only been two weeks on the job, right? About two weeks?
Yep.
Feels like two years.
Not yet, not yet.
So, as we like to say in Foxborough, that we are a destination of choice and that we always have a very strong applicant pool when it comes to any of our positions. And that is the absolute same in this current position here. And to have someone right in our own backyard that ended up surfacing to the top, which is wonderful. And Joe brings to us a wealth of experience in soccer, both boys, girls, some travel soccer, being president of the soccer association, is on the town side, so youth sports up to high school with cross-country, boys and girls as well, in addition to a whole nother career that he has. So I'll turn it over to Joe and let him tell a little bit more about himself and why he was interested in the A.D. position.
All right. Thanks. I don't know, I guess I'll start over with the first time I talked about this stuff with somebody. So, not to recap everything, but I was the president of Foxborough Soccer for several years, ran the travel program, coached my kids from, you know, my daughter, when she was in kindergarten, I started, and she's a sophomore in college now, so. Coached her for a long time, my two sons. I was working in the energy and electricity industry essentially right out of college. I worked basically for the same company through a couple of mergers for about 18 years. Then I got, we were in charge of several power plants in the Midwest which were closing because there were coal plants and it was too expensive to make them clean. So I got let go along with some of my staff that was responsible for those. At the time, I saw there was a freshman soccer coaching position here and I figured I'd give it a try. Then continued coaching track in cross-country and, you know, got another job and was lucky enough to work with a couple of guys who had run college track and understood how important it was to me. So they let me, I was working from home. I was able to spend basically my entire day working, take a two-hour kind of lunch break in the afternoon to come out here and coach, and then go back and see what I missed. So I've been doing that basically since 2012. So, you know, being busy all the time wasn't new to me, being around sports all the time wasn't new to me. And I always thought when I started coaching, I how, I had never considered this path ever when I was in my early twenties. And then time gets away from you and 24 years later, you realize like there's an actual job here of something that you can do that you're really, you know, interested and passionate about. So I applied and I'm thrilled to be doing it. It's only been a couple of weeks, but it's great. It's been great the whole time. Every job has its challenges. It's not, it's not like it's easy all the time, so. But it's great. I'm just really happy to be here.
Well, we're happy to have you. Thank you. I know it's a very busy sports night for Foxborough High School in particular.
There's a lot going on here, yeah.
Thank you for squeezing us in in between cross-country practice, the girls' field hockey, the volleyball, and everything else.
I apologize. So I came from a cross-country meet and then I was outside watching the field hockey game.
You sure that's a proper attire for your new position?
Kind of what I'll be wearing from now on, yeah.
You're representing. It's all good. Do you have any questions for us as a committee?
No, I don't think so. I've actually admitted I've never been to a school committee meeting, but thank you for what you guys do.
You're gonna come to a few now.
I'm sure.
We're fun.
Or you'll get invited from time to time.
It's good to be invited.
Well, you know, as you, as you go forward in your position, you definitely will, I'm sure, have thoughts and, you know, different things to discuss with the committee. I know last, actually, at our last school committee meeting, we talked about the concussion policy. So we're gonna loop you in on that and ask for your input definitely going forward when Richard and Brent, who are our policy subcommittee gurus, take a look at it, so.
Yeah, unfortunately, that happens in, I was just talking to our athletic trainer about it, it happens in every sport and, you know, unpredictable, obviously, and it's probably the most important thing we have to worry about. So from a, from a physical health standpoint, that's really probably the top thing, so.
We haven't looked at our policy since 2012, so it's time to update it and take a look at, you know, how we're, we're dealing with concussions here at the high school. Because we have now accumulated a lot of data and Amy's been, you know, with us for, our trainer's been with us for quite a while. So it's time to take a look at it, make sure we're doing all the right things, which I think we are, but, but you're certainly gonna be involved with us on that. And does anyone on the committee have any questions for, for Joe?
I did get a kick out of it as I read thoroughly everything and it said, "Why did you leave the position?" And you said, "My kid's aged out." I got a kick out of that.
Yeah, you can only be involved in youth sports as long as you have a kid. Well, I guess you could do it longer, but let somebody else take over and handle it.
You moved up to the next level.
I guess, yeah.
Never stopped coaching.
Nope, no. Been coaching since...
Went to a different level.
Yeah, I've been coaching probably since 2005, 2000, yeah, about 2005, so.
Well, thanks for taking on a great responsibility. As you know, and I know Mrs. Myers-Pacud knows this as well, too, but the responsibility of the A.D. in our high schools is absolutely critical. It's important for the public to understand that the time and the hours spent to be a leader for the athletic program after school, it's not extra, it's vital to our kids. So I know it's gonna take a lot of time and there's gonna probably be some ups and downs, I would expect, but thanks for taking it on and being part of it.
It's my pleasure.
Well, and being a parent of Foxborough students yourself, you, you know, know the importance of the interaction with parents and the communication, I'm sure, I know you'll be great at that as well.
Thank you.
Definitely. Brent?
I'm just curious, because you're approaching a new position and it's your first time on the roll. What do you, in the little bit of time that you've had, have had so far in, are there things that you're hoping to learn or glean as you listen and get a sense of the, get a lay of the land and kind of formulate some longer-term plans moving forward?
Yeah, kind, honestly, kind of everything. It's hard to, it's hard to claim that you can be prepared for everything when, like, literally today I got a text for something that I did not see coming, you know? So it's like, it's always something, it's always something different. I think right now, out of the, out of the gate, we talked about this, I think, I think Rich Cormier left us in a tremendous spot. I think he did a great job and was very organized and, you know, I thought he was terrific to deal with. So I'm just trying to keep, you know, kind of his organization, his approach to it in place for now. There's no reason to, you know, adjust anything that I think is great. But over time, once I get more comfortable with it, sure, it's, you know, you gotta find the thing where you're being more proactive than reactive. I think it's fair to say that, you know, we're trying to, the proactive stuff is we're setting up schedules and practices and trying to find coaches for the winter and the spring. And once we can get, you know, that stuff in place, then you have a little time to kind of stop and think about what you can do proactively as opposed to just kind of responding to things that come up as you go. So it's a good question. I just don't have like a really clear answer. You know, of course, everybody's got ideas of what, you know, you think you'd do, but you really need to, you kind of need to settle in first and, and, you know, get a handle on what's, what's happening every day and then, you know, the day-to-day stuff.
Do you have supports, do you have support systems outside the district that you can go to yet?
I know a couple of the other athletic directors outside the district, and I know a lot of, mostly coaches from outside in track and cross-country, and some of them in other school districts that are actually, that I didn't know at the time, were also athletic directors. So there are a few guys that I've, that I'm familiar with, that I, that I have known for, you know, several years now, that I only knew in the capacity of a coach and didn't realize until I started talking to them, that they would say, "Oh, yeah, I have a football game going on right now." And I couldn't figure out why they had a football game going on when we were at a cross-country meet and it just kind of came up. So I don't know how those guys do it. The coaching is, it's tough, it's tough to do both. It's really hard to do both, but I think it's the right thing to finish out the season and it's right for the kids and everything, so. But that said, I under, I don't know how those guys, I don't know how they do it, so. But yeah, to answer your question, yeah, and I'm sure it'll just get, get broader as we go.
And he also attends the athletic director meetings, too, that are another support network, too, within the Hockamok as well.
Yeah, the guy, the other, the other ones in the league are fantastic. We've already had probably two meetings I've already been to in the last three weeks, so, you know, they're, they're a great resource, too, and, you know, they're very welcoming and offering help and all that, so they're, you know, they, I was thinking district, you said district, I thought Hockamok League. So, yeah. Yeah, it's, they've been great so far.
We might know a guy, too, that could help you.
So my only question is, with two full-time things, how, when are you sleeping?
Oh, not anymore. No, that's a great question.
Okay. That would be much better for you as your family.
That would be, that would be never, if that was the case. But, um, yeah, no, that's not, no, I literally just went for the complete, I can't think of a job change more dramatic than the one I just did. So it's, it's interesting and it was scary three weeks ago, but not anymore. It's, you know, it was really, it was something, but, no, definitely, definitely not, couldn't possibly do that.
I looked at this and I said, "Oh, my God, how is he doing it still?" That's what...
It's hard enough to do that and coach, never mind, that might be, that might be a bit much. They don't make the days long enough for that.
Well, thank you for, for taking the time to come and meet with us. Does anybody have any other questions, anything else?
Oh, congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
We'll let you go back to field hockey, volleyball, you know, bouncing around.
They might be done, but I'll have to go look.
Thanks so much for coming, Joe. Welcome aboard.
Thank you, Joe.
All right. There we go. All right. Our next agenda item is the 2019 culture and climate survey results, and I see we have all of our principals here with us.
We do.
Which is wonderful. Welcome, everybody. And, yeah, so, Dr. Manos, you want to lead us off?
Yes. So the culture and climate survey is a perception survey that we've administered for several years now. Actually, this is our eighth annual year to administer this. So I, this is my ninth year, so pretty much coming on board. We started this, and you would think that over time, that you would end up starting to see your participation wane. And we've not seen that. We've actually had the highest participation rate to date.
Excellent.
And that really speaks volumes to, I think, a number of different things. One, that we use the data, and people see that we're using the data in proactive ways. Also, it provides people the opportunity to have a voice. Students from middle school and high school, parents, and then obviously our staff. The other part is that we continue to reflect on where do we need to dig a little bit deeper and what information do we feel like we're missing? Or we might have a wondering about something and changing some of the questions also with the times. So as we look at social emotional learning, adding some questions there. And then at the same time, when we start to see this data, year after year after year, we then ask other questions. Well, what is that percentage really making up when we look at particularly students, as an example, from the different grade levels? So this year, there are, there are really a number of different components that are new. So we had 2,293 parents, teachers, and students who completed this perception survey that, as I mentioned, is an increase since 2018. And that it's the highest participation rate for staff and for parents. So again, that healthy response rate for this many times, I really think is an important note to make. The small percentage decrease in participation for students, we have like senior project at the end of the year, so we don't always get all of our seniors, is an example when we look at some of our, our student numbers there. So we have a very lengthy PowerPoint presentation here. It's actually 92 slides. We will not go through those slides.
Oh, bummer.
But at the same time, with having all of the principals here, which they really are, you know, in, living within the buildings, obviously, and so to have a conversation, to go through and to look at some of these slides, we'd like to point out some things, but if you have questions along the way, are particular things that you would really try to have a better understanding of. So let's, as far as the overview, just for those that may not be familiar, participants are asked to give feedback in a number of areas, which is academic preparation, student support, school leadership, faculty relations and support, parent engagement and involvement, safety and behavior, school operations, and then interactions with school leaders. So these surveys were administered at the end of the school year in, in April going into May. We tried to get them before the end of the school year, again, to capture our seniors before they left. And then we sent out multiple reminders at the staff level and then with parents as well, to encourage them to participate. So that's just an overview of the participation rate, so you can see again where we had the increase with our parents and with our staff. So when we look at overall school quality, this is looking at the percentage of parents, staff, and students that rate our schools excellent, good, fair, or poor. So you can see, as far as staff, 99% are rating excellent or good, 93%, those are the green and the kind of purple bars, with parents at 90, at 93% and our students at 81%. Interestingly, for staff and parents, that's the exact same percentage as last year when we look at excellent or good. It was a three-point difference with students, where last year we were at 84% and this year at 81%. So consistent there.
It would be helpful, not right now, but it would be, I don't, I'm not one of the parents that participated this year and nor last year. I think I was actually one of the small numbers that participated in 2017, so good for me, I guess. But it would be, I would like to see the actual survey, the staff survey, the parent survey, and the student survey, to see the questions as well versus just the results and understanding if that's possible.
They don't, because this is what we, a service we pay for, they don't publish out the questions to the public. Because then anybody, it's not open source, so then anybody could, to use those questions. So I couldn't just, you know, give them all out. As far as sample questions, those kinds of things.
You have to take it again next year.
Or if you wanted to come in and look at it.
Yeah, that would be interesting.
I would be more than happy to sit down with you to let you look at the questions there.
Okay, yeah, we'll do that. Because it's interesting to me how you, the words "good," "excellent," "fair," "poor" all mean different things to different. And if I'm saying something is an eight, on some, some surveys, that's a good score. On some surveys, an eight is an excellent score. And some surveys, if you don't get a 10, then you fall down into the fair category. So that's what I want to understand. These, you know, these numbers look great and they're certainly something to be proud of, but I'd love to understand how the questions are phrased, to understand how people might interpret what they mean. Because if you're using a 10-point scale, we all have a different idea of what 10 means perfect in some people's mind. So nothing, when we all know nothing is perfect, regardless of what they may tell us about Simone Biles and her many gymnastics moves. So I just would love to see the questions.
And many of them you will see as we go, throughout the rest of the slides. But this is just the overall, kind of your general, what's your overall rating? Is it excellent? Is it good? Is it fair? Is it poor?
There's no, it's not a scale, though.
No, that's what I'm saying. It's overall, it's excellent, it's fair. And in the other ones, you'll see it's, "I strongly agree," "I agree," "disagree," "strongly disagree." Or "don't know."
I do think most of the, I did take this survey and I think most of the slides track the questions pretty closely. I mean, they may not be the exact wording, but it's pretty, pretty close in my recollection.
But the ones that are spelled out, they are. It is the exact wording. This is just your, your general, overall. So when K-12 does this analysis and looks at all and puts together the slides for us, and then we have a conference call with them and we go through slide by slide and are able to ask, you know, different questions, really what their message is, and it's the message that has been consistent, it is one of stability and consistency, year over year. And you can see that in, again, that overall school trend with the bars, with the staff, the parents, and the students, really maintaining at a high, high level. And then again, you're not seeing, you know, any dramatic dips from year to year.
I suppose.
This next slide is one that we had talked about at this table in the past in saying, well, we're looking at Foxborough data. What does it look like across the country if we were able to see anybody else that used K-12 insight for perception surveys? So for the questions that are similar, they were able to give us data at a national level. So here is one that's an example, when looking at what rating would you assign to your school. So that's the exact question that they asked, excellent, good, fair, poor. So when you look at that one compared nationally, you can see that even though we saw a 3% difference with our students, they're 17% higher nationally in how they, they rate their overall school quality.
Was that new this year? That was different? Yeah.
We've not been able to have until this year any national comparison points.
So this is good.
As we look across the different stakeholder groups, this, this slide is really kind of showing you over all of those different dimensions, the overall strongly agree or agree. So we look at this between staff, parents, and students to see if there are any major discrepancies between the three groups. If we see a particular dimension, then that's one of the things that we'll dive right in and we'll see that later in the slides as we go more specifically within those dimensions and all of the questions that are asked that make up that percentage. This particular slide here is going to show the elementary school parents in these areas for the two years. Some of the other data points that we have now, by asking some other questions, we're able to have some two-year comparison points. This is our secondary. A lot of times when we look at particular questions, we might see discrepancies between elementary and secondary. And now being able to look and dive into that a little bit more, it gives us a little bit more of a better picture. So as we jump into the first dimension here, if you notice in the top left-hand corner, it says "staff." So for each of these slides, all of yours would say, whether it was staff, students, or parents. On the right-hand side, where you see, you see five years' worth of data, again, we have eight years, but we've, the last five years within each of these slides, and then you have average change over to the right, whether it's, in that first example, minus one, you see zeros. If it's plus or minus 3%, that's considered significant. Anything under 3%, K-12 has said is not considered significant. So that's one of the things that we look at over time.
That's great.
So again, when we look at our staff, we can see that staff are very positive when you, you look at the high levels of agreement across setting standards for students, curriculum instruction within the school, helping them meet their challenging goals, teachers working together and giving appropriate feedback. So when we look at that, then we want to look and see, well, what is the perception of that on staff, on parents? What is the perception on students? So if we look at the next slide for parents, again, if we look at that right-hand column and we look at average change over time, if you look four rows down, "The teachers give me useful information about how to help my child." We see the average change of 4% there. So that's something important because we know that we focused on whether it's a matter of...
The standards-based report cards.
And the parent nights that we have, what are some ways that we're providing more information to parents?
It's a great place for change, right there. Well done. That's a lot of hard work.
When we look at the student slide here, you can look to see, well, have I been prepared to do well in school? This is a slide that we've had for the last eight years, and looking at our students, and we can see for 2019, 91% of students, again, this is fifth graders through 12th graders, strongly agree or agree. We look over in that right-hand column for average change. My teachers give me feedback on how I can improve, that very last question there. So again, it's not significant with a minus 2% change, but we're curious. What does that look like by grade? So this year, we've been able to disaggregate the data, thanks to K-12, by looking across, well, what does that look at fifth grade? What does it look like at eighth grade, et cetera? So these next couple of slides here, is that disaggregation? So when we look at, have I been prepared to do well in school? You can see that it's pretty consistent across, so it's, you don't have big variations for, say, fifth grade versus eighth grade. When we look at fifth graders, 89% of them are strongly agreeing, agreeing. When you look across to eighth grade, it's at 86%. So we're looking to see if we see any big discrepancies by grade level there.
Other than discrepancies, are there, are there percentages that stand out to you? I mean, I'm looking at 34% under eighth grade for, my teacher shows me how, which by itself is a, which is a number that sticks out because there's nothing else below 50.
Correct.
But if you look, you know, if you look at seventh grade, you're seeing a big drop from 63 to 34. So that line in general, but we're starting, these numbers in general tend to be lower than what we've been looking at, we were looking at 80s and 90s, and now we're looking at 50s and 60s and 70s. So do any of those stand out or action items?
So I think as you look at from, absolutely, because that's definitely, that's something that's in our strategic plan. It's something we've talked about with this district strategy for improvement. One of the things that's been interesting, now that we have the national data to look at that, if you turn, or you don't need to turn, I can just change it up here. So now that we can look nationally, what are students saying on that same data point as far as showing me how my lessons relate outside of the school? So our students are at 56%. If you look nationally, it's 51% of students. So it's not, it's not that surprising if you look nationally at what students are saying. As kids get older through the grades, particularly in some content areas, it's harder to show how it relates to their life. And I think that we see that from fifth grade to eighth grade and we see that from ninth grade to 12th grade.
That being said, though, your initial question, does it lead to action items? It has in the last couple of years, and it'd be nice for the numbers to catch up and the kids to actually report on that, because it also was shared in our OECD data. So one of the examples this year, and hopefully we'll see improvement next year, is that is that the project Lead the Way, because it has such a strong component of civics and real life and application. So we look for those opportunities and where we can fortify the curriculum in ways that make those connections stronger. Something we do a lot in professional development and PLCs and all that stuff. So it's definitely on the radar.
Well, even looking at, you know, the data point between the seventh grade, 63%, and eighth grade at 34%, you know, as you pointed out, the seventh graders do the community service and went and did different aspects of town government. So there were actual concrete examples of life outside school. You can see the, you know, you can see the impact in the actual data.
And prior to that, it was Exchange City. So that's, that's been a consistent, they've seen that piece before in seventh grade, yeah.
And it will be interesting for us with the next administration, now that we're looking at it by grade level, even though it's different students and its perception, is it going to be similar? Are we going to, because again, this is a baseline as far as looking at by grade level.
Yeah, like when these seventh graders or eighth graders, what's their reporting going to be too, right?
Exactly.
And Amy, I promise I did look over this, because as you know, I like surveys. But what's, the other piece that's missing for me, I know you called out the things, where you noticed we were either outperforming or underperforming against the, the national benchmark. Is it possible to get all of the national benchmarks, or is that also proprietary?
Not unless we switch surveys. The questions are not the same. So whatever questions that we have that are the same, we're able to get that data.
Okay.
Unless we go to a, a separate survey that's not, we've tailored this to Foxborough. And we've changed it based on wanting to address certain questions that have come up. So unless we switch over to their canned survey, if you will, we won't have national data for all of those questions.
And then we would lose our institutional history over time. We'd be starting to scrap.
Sure, no, I understand how that works. I just, there are certain questions on here that, thank you. I appreciate the reinforcement.
I like reinforcement myself.
Thank you, yeah, I know. Like the second question here, under students, and you have it on all of them in academic preparation, but I am challenged by the work at school. So that's a unique question to Foxborough?
The way that it is phrased, yes.
Okay. Okay, that, to me, that's, that would be a useful, that's a nice one I would like to know. There are certain questions I would love to know more on. Some, some of them, just my personal thing, but there are certain questions on here I would love to be able to say, where do we compare, you know, against a benchmark? But if it's not available, so what we're seeing here, the ones where we actually are only the ones what we can compare, not just ones where it's been selected.
If there's a slide that's national, we've taken every question that we could to be able to compare.
Okay, thank you.
So when we look at student supports, going to the next dimension, again, we see consistency from the staff side over time, seeing, you know, strong agreement as far as children having someone to go to about a school problem, whether it's a personal problem, a school problem, having staff that's available, looking at whether students at school are treated fairly. Do they have a variety of course offerings? And are they getting the support and academic career planning that they need? When we look at those, we were really interested to see more, you know, dig down again more to see, well, if it's career planning, and if we don't see a percentage from students, if we go, actually, we go to students here, what percentage is that? And why would that be? And what grade level? Again, we do have to keep in mind that it's, it's perception, so it's, it's going to be their perception. But if we have, there's a teacher, that second one, there's a teacher, counselor, or other staff member at school I can talk to about personal problems. We see a higher percentage there when it's school problems versus personal problems. Well, so then we start to talk about that. And we looked at this at our administrative retreat with all of our principals and all of our department heads and the, the rest of our expanded leadership team. Why is it school problems versus personal problems? Is it because they don't want to talk about personal problems? And that's, that's going to be the case in, in, in some instances. Middle school versus high school. So we're able to look at that. We see a difference there too, because we know that we've put supports in place, whether it's social workers, with our guidance counselors. And although it's perception, we want to know if students are accessing them and feel that they're being supported. So if you look at the next slide where it breaks it out for students, we can see that for fifth grade up through eighth grade, again, you've got more students in agreement, agreement at fifth grade to be able to talk with a school problem. We're happy to see that when we think about it's a new transition, fifth graders coming into a new school. So if you have a higher percentage there, if that were really low and feeling that you didn't have someone to talk to, then I think that that would be something that would bother us as far as we're not meeting the needs when we think about what the transition programs that we've done with schools. So to, to see that the percentage is, is high at fifth grade, and still, it's, it's pretty consistent across the board. But we definitely see a difference when it comes to personal problems there.
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I, and I know that, I'm delighted that the admin team, you all looked at it, looked at it. I'm just looking back at slide 23, the student comparison over time, the personal problem. The thing that actually strikes me is that the 2015 to 2019 comparison in both school and personal is down between 5 and 10% across the board, just taking those snapshots. And then in terms of the school, with school matters, it's between, you know, it's a little more variety, but a six-point drop, four-point drop, no drop actually, in the, the middle question, people, teachers and staff treating students fairly. And then courses and activities offered at school are interesting, minus 15. And what I'm seeing there is, I'm wondering, I mean, I think as an educator myself, I can say the cohort of students I have now and last year is different than on average in the kid cohorts that I have five years ago. And every group of kids is different. But I guess, I don't know what the, what the team kind of makes of that kind of macro trend of over, over time going down. And I, I wouldn't say it's unique to Foxborough. I'm just, you know, I'm just curious what, what the, what the team thinks about it, or...
Well, to, to that point also, we're at the point where we're looking to make action planning going forward. So with the strategic planning process this year, this will be a document, that will be an important document, because we look at a lot of different data sources. And they're all within their own schools, still talking with their staff about what this, what this means, what are some of the action steps forward. And at the same time, like with this superintendent student advisory council, at our meeting in October, some of the questions Allison and I are going to be bringing that to that group to say, well, what, what do you think this means?
Yeah. Well, and with two, yeah, I mean, Brent makes a very good point, though. There are those, there are two plus or minus 3% which you said earlier was a significant change. I know that our admin team is going to take a hard look at anything that is a significant change and figure out why the, the decrease or, you know, the increase too. If something has increased by 3%, we want to know exactly why and keep doing it, right? But, but this is, it is a little troubling. I, I find the decrease in the, the last data point that I can talk to a principal or another administrator when I have a problem at school to go down, you know, 10% over several years is a little disheartening, I'm sure, to, to you all as well. And I'm sure you want to figure out why, you know, so.
But the other part too...
And I know you will.
When we look at that question there, where that's saying, an administrator, when you look at the slides that talk about meeting with a guidance counselor or someone there, you see a much different picture. There are much higher percentages. So they're not necessarily going to go to a principal or an assistant principal. They're going to go to a guidance counselor. So when we look at those percentages from students, if I go to slide 25.
Yeah, if those are up, they don't feel the need to go to the principal or the administrator. If they're going more...
So we ask the question.
We do ask the question.
And I, I know our, our administrators want to be there for our kids and are there for our kids. So I've just, you know, it's, it's on the survey, and it's something to think about, that's all. That's really all I'm...
Well, look, in high school, it's going up.
Well, that's, that's disaggregated by grade. And high school went down.
In that case, that's not by year.
Yeah. But it is, it is good to see that as the kids get older and the more they get to know you, the more they trust you. That is also good and consistent, I guess, too.
They're all up.
No, those are by grade.
Those are by grade.
Bevy, those are by grade.
By 12th grade, yeah. Well, and then that is, that's good to know.
It is interesting, though, I think it speaks to relationships, the way it progresses through the grades. I mean, it's not totally linear pattern. But when we look at our seniors, thinking that 91% of them, you know, think of how much time they spend with their guidance counselor as they're preparing for college applications and all that stuff. That makes that, in my opinion, that makes the percentage going to their, about their personal problems go higher, because they're spending more time with them and they have more of a relationship. So to me, when I saw that, that was one of the first things I wrote down.
It jumps out at you.
Absolutely.
It would be, never mind. It's going to be a troubling question, never mind. Strike that from the notes.
But to your point, we do ask all of these questions. So the data that comes back, it's then, a lot of times you ask questions and then you have more questions based on the information that you have. So when we look at high school students from those questions there, and for instance, before, when we were looking at an overall percentage of looking at future plans for college or SATs, any of the, you know, assistance with standardized tests, what does that look like? Well, if we see 44% of ninth graders, or I should say only 44% of ninth graders strongly agree or agree, that makes sense to us because they're ninth graders, as opposed to when you look at 84% of 12th graders. Because what's relevant to them at the grade that they're in at the time. But we didn't have this information before.
Yeah, I think it's very interesting to be able to break it out by grade as well.
And talking about actionable items to your, to your question before. So when we think about group guidance and some of the other structures that we have in place, this information can help inform what we're doing through those different structures as well. So that's pretty much the same information that was on the slide before. This is a slide where we were able to have some national data comparisons here. So we can see for the most part, whether it's the staff, the parent, or the students, our district percentages are higher than the national benchmark data, with the exception of the teacher, counselor, or staff member to talk about personal problems.
It's pretty close.
71 to 77%.
But that's also the perception of the staff, right?
Yes.
That first one. So coming from the parents and the kids, it was different.
So the next dimension of parent engagement, looking across over time. So again, when we're talking about average change over time, from the staff perspective, we have a, a couple there as far as communication with parents about their child's academic achievements on, on a regular basis, are they communicating? And then also, the other one that would be considered more significant, parent support me when addressing a behavior problem with their child at school. So it, it's important data to look at. Again, I think it comes back to communication.
Everything usually does.
It really does.
Yeah.
So these are, these are all, going back to Brent's point on the other slide, these are all, we started out relatively strongly in 2015. If you look at where we are now, there are some bigger drops than 2% between, in those five years. Do we, is that a topic of conversation?
Oh, yeah.
Well, it's definitely a topic of conversation. That average change is they're doing the average change over time, is how they're calculating that. But when we look from five years ago to now, yes.
I mean, there, there's, some of those are, that's a big drop.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's similar.
130 more faculty too. You've almost doubled the survey size. So statistically, it's going to shift a little bit. You've doubled the survey size in five years.
And the other thing too, is if you're looking at 95, 97%, you're up towards the ceiling there too. So there's not a lot of room to move.
Again, I'm not...
Is that capturing more, is that capturing more faculty? Because, yeah, between 2018 and 2019, you're doubled.
You've gone from 131 to 238.
Is that the difference between please fill out the survey and we're doing it now in this meeting? I'm just curious. In my school, we're doing it now in this meeting.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, how do you all do it?
We added the assistants. I think at first it was just for certified teaching staff.
So that changed the number by adding the, add assistants? That's actually an interesting piece, because they wouldn't communicate.
And they don't communicate with...
Right, with parents.
So that may be it, but not positive.
It's honestly, since you have the data, if you, if you can, it's worth disaggregating, because like, like just the snapshot trend is something that, you know, you'd be like, oh, God, why did we go down 10 points in five years? Are we really that different? Is the world that different? You know what I mean? Or is it the fact that the population that's actually taking the survey is just a vast, is, you know, skewing the results in one direction?
No, but that is an excellent point as far as disaggregating it between the educational assistants and the classroom teachers.
Yeah, right. If it's, if it's your predominantly, you know, volunteer basis, but, you know, your classroom teachers in a certain set of years, it'd be nice to see that trend over time, because, okay, how are we doing?
Can, can you do that internally, in the...
No, we'd have to have K-12 do that.
Okay, could they, yeah, if they're able to do it, it'd be interesting. Would be helpful.
But that would be... But they would, they would be able to do it, because it's anonymous, but based on the way they send out the survey, it's, whether you're a classroom teacher or whether you're an educational assistant.
They can do it, yeah.
Because otherwise, this doesn't really make a lot, if that, if that pool includes people that don't have, this is part of their responsibility, and that's a, that makes up a...
You don't want that part of your strategic...
A significant number, then this, then these numbers are useless without being able to do that.
Right. You don't want to make major plans on something that they do.
But it also actually brings up another question here, where we have branching on certain questions to where they wouldn't even have these questions when they're answering the survey.
Yeah.
Do you, does that happen, though?
It branches currently, for instance, if you had a problem and you spoke with an administrator, if you said yes, then it branches and it asks, how was it resolved? And what was your level of satisfaction?
Right.
It does for the parents as well. So if you're a parent that hasn't had a discipline issue, you're not really going to have an opinion on whether, you know, how, you haven't had anything resolved, so you aren't going to have an opinion on that.
So this was not a branching question, yeah.
No, it wasn't. But I'm saying in the future, it could be a really good one for that purpose, because they're not going to be communicating with parents on academic achievements and behavior problems, but they are in there.
Okay. I'm going the right way here. What slide is the number is?
Okay. So when we look from the parent's perspective, as far as feeling welcome in schools, again, looking over time, that one is, is more consistent as you look for the last five years and even the three years prior to that, which is not here, because we're not going to do eight years' worth of data. It's, it's consistent and showing stability over time.
And you've nearly doubled here.
Correct. From students' perspective, it's interesting when we get to these next couple of slides, when my parents make sure I do my homework at night, the grade levels, or if they help me with my homework, how that changes from, say, ninth grade to 12th grade. So just to jump to those slides here, you can see that as they progress through the grades, it, it starts to go down a little bit, but still, it shows we have very active parents, that are very engaged parents. And looking at their children and the level of, you know, homework that they have and asking them about it and asking about their day and other, you know, as far as attending school activities, when you see the high school slide, you'll see a greater percentage. But you have sports and you have a lot more at the high school for them to attend than you do at the middle school level. With tutoring, from fifth grade to eighth grade, you start to see that diminish as far as someone at home, you know, my parents helping me with that. And even when we look at the volunteer rates, it's not surprising at the middle school level. We have higher volunteerism at the elementary level, which is, is not surprising. But high school, again, we, we look and we can see that, you know, making sure I do my homework over time. Well, you would expect that, because they're going to be ready. You would hope that, to, you know, to help them as they're getting ready to exit and go on to, you know, beyond high school. But obviously, a lower percentage at the high school level, because when I think about even some of my own children's high school courses, I would not be the best person to come to.
Well, I was just saying, it's got that first one, and make me, make sure I do my homework every night, 63% in 12th grade. You could say that's a bad statistic. Because at this point in 12th grade, if there's 63% of the parents that have to make sure you're doing homework in about eight... In about eight months from now, you're about to be on your own.
Yeah.
You could actually say it should be like forty percent.
And that could be like, did you do your homework?
Yeah.
Is your homework done before you go off to?
It's a good thing, but they're off soon.
That's right.
You know what I'm saying, they're, they're going off soon.
And this was one that we did have a national benchmark for, which is pretty consistent nationally as far as parents feeling welcome at school, and that their input is utilized. Moving to the safety and behavior dimension, this is staff, and looking at this over time, this, this is a question, I think, unlike where we're talking about educational assistants and classroom teachers. Students' behaviors that are addressed through a skills, uh, skills-based deficit approach. So this was a, a question that was changed last year in the wording. And so one of the, one example, so one of the things that came up as we started to look at this as an administrative team is, we need to define what skills deficit approach is. We intentionally didn't define it in the beginning because we wanted to get kind of a benchmark to see if, what the awareness level was, but now that we have two years in, and looking at that particular one, we need to, we need to define it. Like, we do that for bullying as a, because what, what is the definition of bullying versus student conflict? So when, because people might think that student conflict is bullying. So that is defined within the survey. We need to define this one going forward.
The third from the bottom is interesting, from the staff's perception. The twenty-fifteen, eighty-four percent to seventy-one percent bullying and threatening behavior is rare in school. Curious. Good about that, if that's just more awareness, or if it's actually more pronounced.
I don't know if anybody wants to chime in from principal perspective.
I do wonder about what we brought up before with who is answering the survey. You know, the response difference. So I really am interested now to pull that out again, you know?
Right.
Because it has doubled.
It's the same, it's that same group that we're looking at.
Yep.
That drop before was the, there's a different group of folks potentially.
Well, except it didn't, you had one seventy-five in two thousand eighteen, and that was a seventy-three percent. And then you jumped those ninety to two thousand nineteen, and that only dropped two percent. So.
Okay.
There's still been a big drop between eighty-four to seven, between two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and eighteen, when the pool had increased slightly but not doubled.
Or even the drop of, say, seven points from sixteen to eighteen.
Yeah.
When the, the size of the pool is much more comparable.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and that goes back to, like, for instance, you've heard us talk about responsive classroom at the elementary level, implementing that, talking about having class meetings at the middle school level. The second step, which we've had, but there's a new updated version of that, which is pooling in more of the social emotional piece in addition to what it had before. So that, that's an area that we're going to be setting goals around. We're going to be looking at what we've put in place to see what kind of impact that it's had.
How new are some of those, those, some of the things you just mentioned?
This year.
So that's this year. The past three or four years? The past two, three, or four years? Some of those are new? Is there more in awareness? Because when concussion, concussions increased across schools when everyone knew what concussion was. Some people don't necessarily think that concussions drastically increased at that moment, but once you were more recognizing of it, and once students were more aware that seeing stars but going back in means you probably had a concussion, then data, data points started to shift because there was awareness. So that's what I was about to ask. Is there some awareness here by people that they're paying more attention here, so these numbers would shift?
Term and definition of bullying.
Yeah. If we define it better and we're clear about it, then we're more aware of it.
Student conflict versus.
Yeah, so it's more obvious to us, right? So isn't, that's what that question is saying, I think, right? Behavior in the school is rare, so eighty-four percent was one point. If they're now more aware of it, they're starting to be sensitized to it. They're saying, oh, I'm seeing it a little bit more.
Well, they're talking about it more.
They're talking about it more, right.
Because in their class meetings.
Yes, exactly.
How do you respond to your peer if this happens, or something said that hurts your feelings?
That's what I was gonna say, students are encouraged to come forward and talk to adults.
Nice to see how that number bears out in the next few years.
Right.
That's why all this information is so valuable.
Yes, wonderful. Need it about.
As far as breaking those questions down by overall percentage by grades, I feel safe at school, or again, student behaviors are addressed in the school. This is important for us to look particularly at those transition years where we have new students coming in at fifth grade, or we have new students coming in at ninth grade, to see what that looks like. You can see that bullying and threatening behavior is, is rare. We see a difference from fifth grade up to eighth grade. That's there. Most students respect staff at this school. We see a difference from fifth grade to eighth grade. And a, a little bit, not as much, as far as students are friendly to each other at this school. So it's helpful to look at it by grade, because then we can look at our programming, we can think about the things that are in place, but it also can help guide us, whether it's in the web once a month, or, um, not the orientation, but just their monthly meetings with their web leaders. So some of that information, it also trickles, we're not going over this with students, but we're taking the information to be able to take action. Same slide, looking at ninth grade through twelfth grade. I don't wanna go too quickly, so if anybody wants me to stop. So on this next slide.
Yeah.
It's, sorry.
Go right ahead.
It's interesting to see.
Which slide are you on?
I'm, I'm actually, I'm, I'm flipping between the eighth graders and the ninth graders because it's an interesting transition.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be all that surprised to see the trend continue in other institutions, but I'm just, you know, you guys have to work that up. Because you get a kind of a ninth grade bump there. But then eighth grade seems to be.
That could be eighth grade. I remember eighth grade.
I remember teaching eighth grade.
It's a higher risk. Fourth year of.
I remember mama. Little humor. For those old, old enough to remember that show, which I'm not even old enough to remember it, but.
I remember it.
Well.
So this slide.
So this next slide is one that we've obviously spent a lot of time in conversation about with the epidemic of vaping, in particular, that's taking place across the country. Foxborough is no different than any other school in Massachusetts or across the country. And it's been in the, the media. We know that there's, you know, obviously a, a ban now on selling products. So when we look at these percentages as far as agreement here, during the school day, vaping is not a problem, and we look across the grades, to see that it drops as far as the percentage saying it's not by seventh and eighth grade. That doesn't surprise us based on what we hear from students in classes, when we think about our curriculum, working with our SRO, and even students that have been caught vaping. You start to see it with the, with the upper grades. How can we continue to address vaping? We do that through our curriculum. We do that through the, through the health, with guest speakers as well, through our school resource officer.
Parent education.
Parent education nights. So we see those percentages, but at the same time, we're also doing things to address them, but we're not going to be able to end it as, as much as what we're doing because we know that this is an epidemic that's taking place.
Is that an, that's an interesting way to word this question, though. All, all three of those questions.
It's got the negative.
Saying it's not a problem versus, do you see the behavior exhibited? So I may see the behavior, but if I don't think it's a problem, then I'm gonna say it's, no, it's not a problem. So that's a, that puts a judgment on how I feel about the behavior versus, is the behavior present? Have we thought about?
Well, we, so we have some additional questions now to say, have you personally witnessed it?
Okay.
So that was new. Because, is it, again, just this idea?
Yeah.
I think that it's this big problem, or have I personally witnessed it? So try, to try to address that, so then we honed that question a little bit further.
There's a whole section on there. I was going the wrong direction, sorry about that.
Right, now it's toward the end.
Yeah, it is.
Because I found those, I wanted to, to get more insight into those numbers.
Yeah.
Pitch, it's slide seventy-nine. Starts on seventy-eight. There you go, seventy-eight, yep. Yep.
So this was new.
Right.
During the school day. Have I personally witnessed it?
And this is, this is.
This is staff.
Middle, okay, staff, sorry.
This is staff, so we asked for middle school and high school. So we can see that as far as where it takes place, that they personally witnessed it, it's been in a bathroom, because staff have found students with that in the bathroom, and then in the parking lot. If we go to students, again, we see.
I'm sorry, Amy. Do we ask the same question about alcohol and drugs? Since we asked those questions about not a problem, do we also ask the same question?
To where they personally? No.
Witness, okay.
Nope.
And is that intentional, or is that just, we haven't gotten to it yet?
We just haven't, we haven't gotten to it. Vaping was such a, on the forefront of everyone's mind. So again, we can see the bathroom, the parking lot. Even, I mean, you can see that twenty-three percent of students have said that they personally witnessed it in classrooms. One of the things that, you know, it's, it's hard to detect. They look like a USB drive. They can have it tucked in. And teachers are teaching. They're not, you know, if it becomes something that they notice, but it doesn't have a smell, it's pretty invisible. So again, students might witness it, and we might not catch it. I apologize with the flipping back and forth, the regular part of the mouse is not working, so only the track is changing. That's what's throwing me off here.
Driving law.
Room eighty-one.
I will say, these numbers just show we have more work to do in this area, I think, as parents. And, and, I mean, I know our curriculum is strong in this area, but we just can, have to continue to hammer home. And now, we are seeing, two years ago, I think, the presentations were saying, we don't know what the health effects are, but now we do. We're seeing a lot of very severe and very immediate health effects. I mean, unlike cigarettes, which clearly are bad for all of us, but there were difficulties, I mean, there were long-term effects. You didn't smoke a pack of cigarettes and then go into the hospital with popcorn lung. And you're having kids that, you know, vape for a week and end up in the hospital because of what they're doing to themselves, and kids and adults, I suppose. But I, I think now we have some hard data to really hit our kids with in the health classes and, and demonstrate to parents that this is not anything that children should be doing, or adults for that.
And the highly addictive nature of it.
Yes, thank you.
Too. That, that's the other part, that, that's really difficult. We've had students that have come forward even who have asked for help.
Yeah.
Because.
Yeah.
It is highly addictive.
And we've done such a good job educating people about the dangers of tobacco, that it's just mind-boggling that this is an epidemic in our society right now, really is.
Well, but the problem is, it was originally portrayed as something that was safe. And it was a great alternative and no damage, and you couldn't do it, you know?
Yeah.
So everybody thought, oh, it's a cool thing. And unfortunately, that's not the results that are.
That's right.
Quickly coming out.
I know.
It is so accessible.
Jack up the amount of nicotine that's in it.
Mm-hmm.
Literally design it to.
Exactly. Well, these slides were pretty disturbing, though, I'm not gonna lie.
And the other part that I think's important to note, we're asking these questions.
Yes.
I'm glad you are.
I'm glad you're asking.
I don't, I don't, well, I, well, I can tell you, as far as K-12 insight, there's, there's not another district in Massachusetts that uses K-12 insight nationally. There's a number, there's others within New England. But to go and ask these questions? It's, you, you have to be okay with finding out the information in order to action plan going forward.
Exact, well, you have to know what's going on in order to know how to deal with it. I appreciate that we're asking these questions.
Okay, so I'm gonna jump back to some of the previous slides, the other dimension.
Can we have a page number if we're going back?
Yes, let me just.
There's lots of pages to flip through.
So I'm back to slide forty-five. We were back in that, we're still within the dimension of safety and behavior, because this is something that's very much on, on everyone's mind.
Page twenty-three, Debbie.
Shot twenty-three, yep.
Thank you. Within your packet, sorry, the, the slide number is.
That's okay, but it has, it has the slide number on here, too.
You got it.
So, again, you can see that some of those questions we didn't ask when we go back to, you know, vaping and drug use. We've just started asking those questions in the last two years. So we're at, when you think about eight years, it's, it's baseline data, really. It's only two years' worth of comparison, so that's important to, to note. And then, I mean, even something to the extent of children understand that the school rules extend to the bus. That was a question that was added based on conversations that we had had with behaviors on buses. So it's important to know that it is an extension of the classroom. So adding those, you'll see a lot of not applicables for those, those three years that are there. When we look at parents, looking at the bullying and threatening behavior is rare across the board. Again, the average change, but I think that part of that goes back to the awareness. But again, it's questions that we need to, we need to address with some of the things that we have in place. And even our bullying and intervention plan, going back and, and looking at that and revisiting. And I think that part of the strategic planning process will be a good time to look at that information as well.
I think that the other two questions, the two middle questions are actually, I would love, were they, were those also branches? Because that's an interesting, if parents feel that staff is not responsive, I mean, they're, so they're at about a fifty percent mark, and then, do they understand the role of the school resource officer? Because that's a pretty low, I mean, I think that's a valuable role personally, but is it well-known enough to know what that means? Because that, I would expect that score to be higher, because I, like I said, just intrinsically, I think that's an important role.
That was not a branching question. That was just asking everyone as far as on the response when bullying. So it, it could be that they, they don't know because they.
And it went up, but still, it's a lower number than I would.
And the school resource officer, that came out, too, as far as communication. What does the school resource officer do? And so that was part of the FAQ that just went out with our school safety information to let parents know, that they're looking at, yes, to, to protect and to be a community policing and to be a person within the schools that are supporting, whether it's through vaping lessons in the curriculum. We see an increase there, so they see it's important and necessary. But again, it's just been asked the last two years.
It's also how you ask the question, because if you're asking, is it necessary? There may be a lot of parents who just don't think it's necessary because they don't have a problem. So it's not necessary. Exactly.
Right.
So it's not a negative, they just don't think you need it because they don't see an issue within their own kids or with, with, with their kids, friends, or. They might not know the value. Because the previous slide, what's the previous slide about, say, about safe at school? Isn't there a parent one that says parents?
Yeah.
So ninety-two percent think they're safe at school.
Right.
And we have a great resource officer that's part of that.
Good point.
And they're not even sure why he's there.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And if you feel safe, you actually might feel like you don't need him, him or her, right? You actually may feel that, even though the resources is, you know, bigger than people know.
Yeah, sure. Just matter, slide forty-one, safety behavior. It's, we looked at it first when we were looking at vaping. Sorry, I'm getting back. The staff members are responsive when students report bullying. I believe that, that's a student slide, is that the one we're looking at? And.
That's the one, this. That's the one, this broken up by grade. Forty-one, that's the, the high school students?
Yeah, okay. That's disappointing. Assuming, I imagine the faculty's perception would be different. Meaning the staff members are responsive when students report bullying.
That's the student responses, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, meaning I imagine staff would perceive it to be higher. Meaning that they are responsive.
I wonder what the percent of actually disagreeing with that as opposed to don't know is to-
Oh, you know, yeah?
You know?
You're right.
So, that'd be interesting.
Yeah, you're right.
I mean, it's a classic problem of how we want to communicate, especially with, often times, high schoolers and, uh, you know, how we perceive we're communicating with, how well we're communicating with them versus how well they perceive we're communicating with them.
There's also two education on what bullying is. So whereas a student may say, "I'm being bullied," by the real definition of it, it's not, it's a disagreement. I can, prime example that we've been dealing with-
You're right.
And it's, it's a disagreement. One does not want to be a friend with another one and, and it takes on this whole other dimension. And, um, it's also that education of, no, this is more a change in friendship, a change in opinion, a change in, in who somebody wants to be friends with. And so, so, that's a, that's another piece that just comes in here, too. It's that education over time, too, for folks. And really understanding what that means, so.
And the more faculty know about it, and keep their consistency, we've got, you sort of, true.
To Brett's point, though, uh, slide forty-four shows that the teachers feel like it's ninety-one percent.
Yes. The other interesting, just kind of cross-slide comparisons is, if you look at the question on its own, "I feel safe at school." For both, say, eighth graders and ninth graders, is lower than when you delineate it, "I feel, you know, safe on school grounds, before school, after school," and all these things. And like, it's kind of, on both of them, you take a five percent hit, just on the broad question, "I feel safe at school." But then when you break it out, the numbers are on average, you know, five, six percent higher.
Is it useful to throw out the don't knows? On some of these?
I think that that also can tell you information, though, if it's on a particular topic.
To separate, maybe not throw it out, but to separate the don't knows. Like on the school resource officer. The don't knows.
Right, because sometimes don't, well, don't know might mean a different actionable or non-actionable.
Right.
So are you suggesting like another column that shows the percent of the don't know?
Right, because if we think it's because, again, maybe my kid doesn't, I've never had a need for a school resource officer, then it could be strongly, it could be one of those four, I could just say, "I'm using don't know as not applicable, because I've never had a need for it." So if that's throwing things off, or we think that we have an education issue, like we just talked about, you know, with the, the recent, you know, additional-
Responsive classroom or second staff.
Has been going out, then that's gonna tell us something differently. But, uh, I know you have all the data, so it might be interesting just to look at, on some of these, how high a percentage of, if you've got, you know, what, eleven, hundred, I can't remember, thirteen, twenty-four numbers, how many of those were, were don't knows versus actually reporting a, a real score?
I would guess there's a high percentage of middle school boys that answer, "I don't know." A lot of questions.
I'm not gonna judge that.
There's no way to break that out. Just a joke.
There's just so much information that's here. When we look at friendship relationships with students, someone's friendly to me, I have someone to talk to. There's so much information that's there, so this is not a survey that's just administered and then we don't look at it. We continually go back to this, and I think that that's the important message, is that it's, it is perception data, but it's actionable data for us as far as where we continue to look to improve. We want to be able to look to see where we do well, but at the same time, we are areas of opportunity. And to set goals around that and to make sure that we're meeting the students' needs that are in front of us. And if it means defining something a little bit more, so we can get a better understanding from their perspective, then we need to do that. Or if we need to drill down further within the data, because other questions have come up. There's been times, too, where principals have taken information from this because they really couldn't get the information that they wanted. Then they create their own survey. And they send it out to their staff to be able to say, "We need a little bit more information here to dig in a little bit more," because this created more questions for us.
When we put as a goal, you know, back, was it twelve years ago now? Nine years ago? The first strategic plan, at least the first one I worked on, I was a parent representative, we put the goal, the, um, is it, which goal is it? That feel, that our stakeholders feel valued, safe and have a voice. And gathering this information was the-
Going back to that objective.
Going back, was the objective, objective three, thank you. Was what we, we were just, we were putting in place, the survey. We had none of this information. We wanted to gather the information so that our, our stakeholders would feel valued, safe and have a voice. And I think the, um, accumulation of data and how we have used it over time really has listened to the voice and continues to. I think that's why we have kept that goal, I mean, we debated and debated over the, the last two iterations of our strategic plan, whether we should change that objective or, you know, reword it. And we've said continuously, no, because it's so important to listen to our staff, our parents and all of our stakeholders, students, and, um, synthesize all this information in order to make our school district a better place for everybody, so. And I think we have continued to do that. It's just really interesting. We didn't have any of this information, you know, eight years ago. And now we have gathered a significant amount of information, I've done so much with it, you know, all of you have done so much with it. Thank you. Sorry, didn't mean to go off on that little tangent, but-
So are there any particular slides that you would like to jump to as far as any questions that you had or wanted a further, you know, insight to maybe some of the questions that were asked? Brent?
I, I would just, uh, if you have more insight, great, but I imagine it's a work in progress like all of this, like all of our kids. That last thing that I caught my attention about, staff members are responsive when students report bullying and how we perceive and how we understand that, it's equally interesting or troubling that, uh, slide forty-six, that the last two years, we've asked that question of parents, and those numbers are also, uh, low. Lower than I, I guess, well, lower than any of us would want, right? Forty-seven percent in twenty-eighteen, forty-nine percent in twenty-nineteen. Lower than actually the students are reporting. And, you know, a full fifty points, you know, forty-five points off of what the faculty's perception is. And so, I'd just be curious, just keep digging at that. Because it's, that, 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 that trend is, or that, that discrepancy is, um, something to hammer away at.
And that's one, I think, that the don't know piece is important to look at, too.
It is, absolutely. You know, it is, yeah.
Can, um, we didn't really spend any time talking about any of the school operation slides. Was there anything in there that-
More about folks in there.
That has-
Anything caught your eye?
Standing out?
Well, I think one of the things that did stand out, and we had lengthy discussions at the retreat on this, and it comes back to, um, food. That was, that was one of the areas. Food.
Really?
As far, so if we look here, where we see a lower percentage, healthy food is served at the school, as far as staff. You, you see a decline over the five years, so the average change there is two percent. But again, we've gone in the last five years from eighty-two to seventy-six percent. If we look at that same question for, so we're in, you know, the high seventies, if we look for parents, that healthy food is served in the cafeteria, it's a little bit lower than staff, when we look across there. And then when we look at that same question with students, you see a much different-
Big jump, yeah.
Percentage that's here as far as, you know, the, the high-quality food is served in the school. It's-
Tough customers, Brent.
We hear, you know, as far as the porport, the portion size, again, I'm having to buy double, you know, lunches because of the portion size. You also see kids not taking so many of the different selections that are offered. What, and they try in the cafeterias, as far as the fruits and the veggies and the, and the different options they're offering. They're, they're changing that up, but you can't force them to take some of the food. And what they may want is not necessarily the most healthy. We're trying to get them to take fruits and vegetables on their plate. I mean, you're in the cafeterias, you, you see it as well. And then we, we have the other, you know, your hands are tied as far as the portion size and, and what we can do. Bill, you can speak a little bit more to that.
I guess it also depends on where the student is drawing his conclusion from. If I were to go to a decent restaurant and that was fresh, high-quality food as far as how I was looking at it, and then I go to a school cafeteria for three dollars and fifty cents, do I expect I'm going to get the same level? I think when you see that all of our schools have salads, you know, fresh salads every day, that's, that's fresh fruit, fresh vegetables, um, most of the stuff gets thrown in the trash. But yet, they don't feel that that's a quality item. So I, I, I think it's, it's, the perspective is hard to, to gauge on exactly what it is. What, what is it that they would classify as fresh, healthy food?
Well, this is a good area for-
I'd actually like to see-
Explore with your superintendent's group, I will-
I'd actually like to see, I'd like to see the students, I'd like to see the students actually give me a menu of what they would classify as a fresh-
High quality.
You know, high-quality meal and be able to look at it. Because that would be very informative to us, quite honestly. And to be able to look back at that. Because quite honestly, that's-
Leuvenion.
Yeah, and it would be. And I would agree. And no one's gonna argue that.
Cooks in the memory.
Yeah.
You know, so I, it, it, you know, it's, I don't want to say it's relative to price, but it is somewhat relative to price.
Somewhat.
In what you can offer, and I think we, we offer a, a very varied menu for the, what's being paid. But, you know, that's not an excuse. If, if people feel that there's something that we're truly missing, what is it that they feel we're truly missing? And unfortunately, that's where a survey like this, you know, it's their perspective. I don't know what it is that they, that they're missing.
Doesn't answer the question, but it, thanks for more information.
On a daily basis, I can tell you that the Fertgo's in our salad bar and actually the recent either Caesar salad or taco salad, depending upon the day that it happens to be in the week, are the hottest items that we've got going in that cafeteria. And those are fresh every day. So those are, at least at the high school level. I think on some of the main course dinners, I think that's probably where we would wind up seeing it, but they, they really appreciate the salad bars, in particular those in the fresh room. Either whole or cut up, as I'm always telling them. Either the cut up or the whole, take it. One or the other, so.
Um, I'm sorry. I wanted to switch off of food for a second. I don't want to take you off of food if you want to talk about food, because I think food's a hard one, because it's a lot of palettes, a lot of things you have to try to meet. So it's an interesting number and it stood out, but-
I mean, well, that was one that jumped out. So when you said, "What jumped out?", that definitely did.
One of the ones that jumped out to me was, if you look at the staff survey, um, the responses on, the latest response on students have access to reliable computers and the internet at school-
I had circled that on mine.
Is significantly lower than both parents and students saying the same thing in the past year.
So, I think I can give you a little bit of information that's there.
Okay.
And this goes partly to how technology's changed over time. So there, there's a couple of different things that come in. So when we implemented the, um, the cows, the computer-on-wheels, the laptop carts, okay, they're called cows. Computer-on-wheels.
I like that.
Laptop carts.
I just thought we went from computers to cows.
No.
Those were, those were first, when they-
Global students, okay?
When they were purchased, for the purpose that they were purchased for was a different intent of what teachers are now using them for. They are not designed, those particular laptops on those carts, to carry the heavy software of some of the other things. So teachers will get frustrated, they want to take those, because it's convenient to take those laptop carts into their room and to use it. But that was not the design. They're smaller as far as the laptop itself, so if they have been sitting where they've had a big monitor and they are in a lab, so you, you've got those pieces, um, as far as the, the pieces actual, the computers and what they're using and when it comes to the software. When it comes to speed, as far as downloading things with the internet, we have far more devices, and Erin can speak to this so much better than I can, that we track all of that data and look at the number of devices per day of what is on the network. From phones, they're not turning their phones off and not connecting, they're trying to download things on their phones using our network. So if you have all of those connections from mobile phones, plus all of the connections from our laptops, and we have increased the laptop carts significantly in addition to what we already have with our labs, to be able to handle all of that at the same time-
And the cinder block walls, those create a problem.
And the cinder block walls.
Yeah.
So yes, people are frustrated because it's not, they're trying to use it in some, in many cases, for what the intent was not.
Right, and is that different, do you, and because I know you can look at this, this way, and I assume you have, do you see a difference in this score between the elementary level, the middle school and the high school? Like, do the middle, do the elementary teachers report, uh, less satisfaction on that number than the high school, or is it switched, or is it pretty consistent?
Well, it's different because I think the usage is different. And then you've got some other, um, elements that go in, like Office 365 and using Teams and OneDrive at the middle school and high school level, where that's going to be web-based. So if there's something going on with Microsoft and it's not working, they're gonna be more frustrated at the secondary level than they are at the elementary level because they're not using that. So I think that it's varied, to answer your question.
I would agree.
I would expect it to be varied, I just want to know if you knew what the variance was, is, would be my, was really the question.
I think more anecdotally, probably, from the conversations we have, like, um, if you have a, it's just like your cellphone service, if you walk five steps one way, you might lose your signal. We have pockets where we know we have challenges, and so, those are, you know, trying to be addressed. And so that person would have a very different answer if they were in one of those pockets than the person down the hall.
Like a concrete example, if they grab the laptop cart, one of the things that we know, each student should sign on to the same laptop that they were on prior. Because it's building their profile. And if they're signing on to a different one each time, the amount of time that it takes from the classroom. So it's, it's learning some of those kinds of things, um, from the technology side. They're shutting certain things down because of the number of students that are jumping on with their phones, when we need it, for instance, during MCAS. And we've got the computers being used for that. But when you look across as far as having, you know, the textbooks and the materials and feeling supported, you see high levels of support.
The other one that stood out just a little bit to me was, "The school is clean and well-maintained, with working climate control, good lighting and well-kept grounds."
I'd love to separate that one out about climate control, because I-
Air conditioning.
Yeah, it's air conditioning.
Right, we had that-
And I wondered, is that was what the, and so that would be interesting to know if that was what people were responding, what everybody was responding to.
What is it, like, the third, eleven-point drop, just on that one question, one year? And if we had a rather more than here?
Right, which is, like I said, it would be interesting, if that is the point, then I'd want to, it's easy to isolate, right?
Yeah, I don't think grounds did eleven percent how it worked. Right, it's, looks, it's, yeah, so it's curious. How many people, or if it's just a thing that is talked about amongst students, anyway.
On the positive side on this one, is like, the, the first two, are the first one, are the first two. You know, the, having access to textbooks, materials and technology, those are high scores, which is great.
And that's, and that's teaching and learning, and that's what we're doing for students every day, and that's what is critically important, to be able to deliver your curriculum. And so they do feel supported-
Right.
-as far as by the district and, uh, by the school committee and by the community for what they have. Any other questions on school operations? Again, whether it's students, staff, or it's parents, you see high marks across there when it comes to instructional materials and, and resources that are there.
And we don't give people an option to say, "Not applicable." If it's not applicable, they select "Don't know." We, we hope.
Agree, disagree, strongly agree, don't know.
Okay, that's interesting.
I just, you, I'm glad you put it out, because I missed it the first time through, but the students give that question very high mark. Reliable computers and the internet.
I know, that's what I was-
I know.
I know.
Because they're all jumping on the network with their phones.
But they're the ones, yeah, it's so interesting.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, I missed that.
If you think about the, the amount of support that we have provided, when it comes to all of those laptop carts, when we have all of the fixed labs that are there, when you look at the document cameras that they have, all of the technology, I, I would expect to see, you know, hi, high percentages that are there.
It's also an area, though, you're always chasing, because no matter what we put out there, we are behind the curve. Erin will be the first one to tell you that, and it's just because of the cost nature of, you know, we've got a very generous community, as far as what they support us with on our CIP. But if you think about it, even with that, we're talking five to six-year cycles on changing out stuff. And, and look at what you've done in your own house, in five to six years' worth of iPhones and computers and stuff like that, how, how much faster they've changed, more than likely within your, your home. So, the, the student sees two sides of it, you know. And unfortunately, or I guess fortunately, the, you know, technology level keeps escalating as far as its speed. So that's, and, and as we know, our students are more versed to it than, than we are. So they would be the ones actually ironically noticing it more than what we would, or should.
Which is...
They're not kneeling you on it.
Right, which is, exactly, which is why I would have thought their number actually would have been lower versus the, the teacher number, which is the lowest.
There's nothing more exasperating as a teacher, to have your plan and then all of a sudden it doesn't work. So kids are probably, yeah.
No, and I think at the elementary level, we introduced online assessments for our students. I know the teachers at Igoe with the cinder blocks, there was some frustration with that piece of it, because they only had, you know, special education teachers who would come in for half hours, they had to get the test done in a certain time window. So that part of it. But we also learned smaller things, such as, we told, the students found out that until the light turned off after they powered down, they couldn't shut the laptop. If they shut it before, that caused a problem for the next person using it. So each year, we get a little bit better with our understanding, but we're also putting more demands with our curricular assessments as well.
Good point.
I, I know we're getting past time. I just, the dimension on school leadership, I, I think this really speaks to your five principals that are here. When we, when we look at a, at a high level of agreement, as far as the decisions that are made in the best interest of kids, you, you see that across the board in the 90 percentiles, as far as knowing what is expected, the involvement in decision-making. And I think that that's an example of when we see a question that, for instance, the faculty has an effective process for making group decisions to solve problems, that, that's your, your lower percentage there across the board. But that's where principals have gone in and asked more specific questions based on that data, and then set goals on that. And if you look from one year to the next, even by school level, you see that there's differences there. So it's really important, by, by school level. But then, as far as the, the degree of collaboration and seeing that encouraged, we know that collaboration is, is key, as far as working for the betterment of students. So when we can look at that and see high marks there, looking at, again, the professional development that's, that's offered, feeling respected and supported, and to see high levels there from staff, that's important, because our staff are who are working with our students every day. And we want them to feel supported, and we want them to feel respected and valued, and that their, their, their input is important. And so when you look across, you know, all of those dimensions, and you, you see so many in the high 90s, and you see it consistent over time, that, that's really important as far as the teaching and learning environment that is within each of our schools.
Mm-hmm.
The interactions, when we look at, for administrators being available, again, you see these, these high marks of administrators being courteous, and, and knowing that they're, they're listened to. You, you know, somebody might bring a problem, it might not be the answer that they want, but to know that, you know, they, they do feel valued, they do feel that they've been listened to, and they've responded in a professional way. I think, again, that really speaks to our administrators. In parents, this was a branching question. So if they had an issue, was the administrator available? Did they listen to their concerns and respond in a way? So you're, you're seeing consistency across. It might not always be the answer that they want, so that can play into that too. But again, you're seeing that, that they are being heard.
Mm-hmm.
This was the benchmark data for the national data that we had. In, in this area, you can see that all of our percentages, they, they are, exceed the benchmark, as, as far as the national level. These questions, we've, we've talked a lot about them in the past, and I think this, you know, transition to middle school, transition to high school, we're seeing some, we've seen improvements there, we've seen where we needed to ask more questions, and we continue to do that. And it's an area that is always a topic of conversation, of how can we continue to make transitions smoother and meet the needs of students, whether they're going from elementary to middle, high, et cetera. These particular slides here, not to go over them, but again, it provides more information getting to the student level, as far as study habits and homework and behavior, and how that's changed, and looking at that from a middle school and then a high school perspective, too.
Mm-hmm.
And then these were some new questions that we asked. So we only have two years' worth of data, looking at more of our social, emotional, mental health, but more so the diversity piece. And some questions that we're asking, and I, and I anticipate that we'll be looking at how we're asking certain questions, and possibly adding different types of questions. But it'll be really important, as we go through the strategic planning processes, we're looking at, how are we celebrating diversity, as far as cultures and backgrounds, in a way that we'll see that we're, we're promoting that, we're communicating that. And students continue to feel that they're, they're encouraged to talk about how they think, how they feel, celebrate their cultures, bring that forward, and, and know that all of their viewpoints are encouraged. So again, two years' worth of data that we have there, pretty consistent, looking from students, staff, and then parents. And then the rest gets more. We went through those, and then the, the other was about participation in PTO meetings and so forth. So I guess what I would leave you with here is that this is actionable data for us, in many, many different ways, from at the school level, through their own school improvement planning, but it will also be actionable data for us at the strategic planning level. So this is a lot of information to go through tonight, but those of you that end up being on our strategic planning committee will be seeing this again, and discussing it more, because perception data is really important.
Really is.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm delighted that you present all this information, and that you all just discuss it openly. It's great. It's a beautiful model of leadership. It's the data, it's what it is, and let's discuss it, and let's make plans on it. So, thank you.
And thank you to the five principals for coming out, another night out for you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
They're home away from home.
Good night, thank you, everybody.
All right, yes, thank you for that summary. This is not the last time we will hear about this information, I know.
But it's very exciting that people are recognizing their voice is taken seriously.
Absolutely.
They are listened to.
And hopefully, more people will continue to do the survey when it comes around in the springtime.
Well, when they see the positive changes that come out of it.
One would hope, yes, absolutely.
One would hope so.
I like seeing that, reflecting back on the goals session we had with you both, with all of us, that a few of the points on here were already addressed in looking ahead at goals this year. Great.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
Gee, he's gonna be glad he ran the school committee pretty soon.
I'm not feeling it would be mutual.
All right, well, we're a little bit behind our schedule, but I think we're gonna make it up quickly in the next items. We have our BIKO County Collaborative Quarterly Report with Dr. Berdoss.
Okay, so this can be pretty quick. So it's Dr. Grubert, as we know, is the executive director there, and superintendents, we are the board of directors. So we meet monthly. And this is a quarterly report, which really outlines some of the highlights. And one of, at our, our meeting just a, a week ago, they were very excited to be able to have all of their staff in one location. They've not been able to do that, because of the sheer number of people that are there. So when they opened on August 27th, they were able, at their Providence location, to have everyone gather in one location, which was, was new. Also, we, there's a new playground at the summit location, which was completed, and that is a, a really wonderful thing for the children to have there. At that particular location, when they originally unveiled a beautiful building, everything that they did, they've now moved the elementary and the, the secondary, they've moved them down to the first floor. Because as you move into a new building, and you've got space, and you start to see what works and what doesn't. So that was really evaluating their own space and making changes to, to better meet the students' needs. So now they have, they have space for music and gym, and their school store, which has been a big hit over there. At the close of the school year, they had 234 students, which has been their highest yet. It's interesting, the number of BIKO districts and other districts that are looking to become BIKO partners, based on their numbers. It, it's really a matter of, you really can't. So they're exploring other space, too, when they're looking at particular programs, social, emotional learning, that has definitely been an uptick with many districts, and trying to meet the needs of those students and programs. So they're, they're going to be looking as part of the strategic plan this year, for them, exploring other space options, because of those numbers. And then just another highlight here, is that when, when they opened there, with their, with their enrollment, the referral piece here. So it's, it's not just a matter of, you know, looking for a program. It, it's really a nice tribute, when other districts are looking and making referrals there, that speaks to the programs that BIKO is offering. And I think that's just, it's, it's a really important point to make, because when you have someone who is referring you based on their experience, and it's really positive, word of mouth, you can't get better than that, in knowing that you're meeting students' needs. Any questions on their quarterly updates?
This is good. I don't know, does Rob know, or do you know Brent, that Dr. Arlene Grubert moved from Foxborough, a very good position here, to become director? She worked for Foxborough.
Well, she was our Director of Special Education.
Yeah, she was. I didn't know if Brent was aware of that, Brent.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. We didn't want to lose her, but now she's helping a lot with this.
Amy, do we need a motion to accept this?
Yes, we do.
I'd like to motion that we accept the superintendent's BIKO County Collaborative Quarterly Report.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, 5-0-0. Thank you, Amy. We have an enrollment update.
So that's in your packet. October 1st is the official enrollment with our SIMS data. So our current enrollment is 2,584 students.
Okay. Excellent. Any questions, anybody? All right. Moving on, we have a donation. We like these. Acceptance of donation, FHS landscaping.
I'm gonna turn this one over to Bill.
Yeah, so this is an anonymous donation, but if you've had the opportunity to see the front of the school, here at the high school, you'll have noticed some major changes.
It looks great.
Sidewalks put where the kids actually walk, some new benches for the kids when they're waiting for rides, some great landscaping, as far as bushes and stuff. The donor did ask that we read one, something into the record, so with your acceptance, "The donation beautifies the entrance of the Foxborough High School was made to recognize and celebrate the many wonderful students and staff that have entered in, in the past, and are now regularly tending the spe, the special place, to grow and learn and participate." The donation was basically just north of $10,000. It was generously done, and as I said, it was a cooperative effort, as far as how we designed the front. The person had a lot of input into, you know, the look of it, but I think if you, again, look at it, it does really pop the front.
Oh, absolutely.
Beautiful.
So, much appreciated.
It's an excellent enhancement to the front of the school. It's absolutely gorgeous. So, wonderful. Could we get a motion to accept the donation of the landscaping? Do we need to accept a certain amount?
$10,000, $10,157.
Okay.
And I'll say, it's kind of out of the ordinary, the way this is coming this way, but it was done because it was a stock donation, and it was a sale of the stock, and we had to wait until the stock was sold, and stuff like that, to actually give you the number. But the work had to be done, obviously, before school started, so.
And take advantage of the cooler weather.
That's right.
Well, we are definitely grateful to our anonymous donor.
I'm going to accept the generous anonymous donation, in the amount of $10,157.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of accepting this generous donation, make it with gratitude. And Janet, could you make sure that the statement Bill read is in the minutes in its entirety, so that we have it going forward? So thank you very much to our anonymous donor. It's beautiful out front. Okay, moving on to other matters. Amy, would you like to start?
No, I'll throw it to Allison, because we have a big day coming on Friday.
We do.
We do.
Big professional development day happening on Friday, so we'll all be hearing more about our district curriculum accommodation plan at a future meeting, I'm sure.
Excellent.
But we're excited.
We're looking forward to it. Yes. And then, of course, Monday is Columbus Day, so we have an upcoming four-day weekend for the students, three days for our staffs, right? Very good.
That's great.
Yep. Okay. Would anybody else like to add to other matters? Yeah?
I thought it was very exciting to drive into the parking lot today and see lighted games going on on our new athletic field.
Well, we've had the lights up and running for a while, but the bleachers all lit up, and it's very active, yeah.
I know, but the bleachers were lit, and I thought that was great. And I just, for my own edification, did we resolve our November 4 conflict date?
No, that was, that was my thing, that I was gonna bring up, so that we are all on the same page. We need to discuss our upcoming schedule for October and November. So, as we know, we have a conflict with these towns, special, the special town meeting on November 4. And we had discussed potentially moving our meeting on October 21st to October 28th, so that it would give Dr. Berdoss and Dr. Mello an extra week to prepare the baselines and benchmarks information, and the, also the OECD results.
Yes, right.
And...
All of the MCAS information.
Well, and all the MCAS. So will you be able to have that all ready for the 28th?
For the 28th would be doable, yes.
For the 28th. And is the committee available on the 28th, all of the committee? Because it's really important information.
This would be in lieu of the meeting on the 21st?
It would be, no, no, it would be instead of the meeting on the 21st.
So we'd move, we'd move it to October 28, and then not...
And then we'll just go to the special town meeting on the 4th, but not have a, not have a school committee meeting.
So two meetings compressed to one. 21st and the 4th compressed to one meeting.
Yes, essentially, yeah. Yeah. So would that work for everybody?
Yes. Oh, I don't know, it would work for me.
Works for you, okay.
Works for me.
All right, so we have three, four.
Yeah, I can just read.
All right. So in that case, we will cancel our meeting scheduled for October 21st. We will have a school committee meeting, a regular meeting, on October 28th, here, at 7:00 PM. And we will do all the MCAS baselines, benchmarks, and the OECD results.
Lots more data.
Lots of data. It's, it's a big meeting.
Careful what you wish for.
No, we need for executive session.
No, I don't believe...
Hopefully.
We have an executive session. We don't have any reason for executive session, so we'll meet at 7. Then on November 4th, we will, you know, have our special town meeting, but we will not have a school committee meeting, that.
That's also 7, yeah?
That is, I think the special town meeting is at 7:30. So, and then, of course, just while we're on schedule, remember next Thursday night is the financial summit at, are we at Town Hall, Bill? Do you remember?
I think so.
I think so. So it's, it's at the, the selectmen's meeting room, the gala meeting room, at Town Hall.
Seven?
7 o'clock on Thursday, the 17th. And Janet, that does need to be posted as a school commit, a special joint meeting with advisory committee and the board of selectmen, so.
We'll do.
I hope you can all come to that, and we'll just do what we usually do at a joint meeting, and open our meeting, and answer any questions that are...
Okay.
I still have a couple of things.
That's October 17. Yes, Bill?
I'm very excited that French Exchange, once again, since the beginning of the 1980s, is arriving this Sunday. And thank you for one of our school committee members for being a host family. And we're, all of us are invited to the welcome reception at 2:10 on Tuesday, the 15th, here in, in the...
Media Center.
Media Center. And then something very exciting happened at Taylor School last week. Our wonderful Debbie Spinelli was honored by the Taylor PTO, and a replica was built of a school bus. And when people are using it, it's, it's wired so that the red lights, when a child is near it, the school bus, the red lights in the back are on. And it's named the Debbie Spinelli Little Library.
Free library.
Free. Free library. It's in the form of a, a school bus, and you may borrow books... It's in the form of a, a school bus, and you may borrow books out of it and return them, or leave one there for other children to borrow. And it was, she was totally surprised.
It was a very nice thing, but Taylor PTO sponsored it.
Yeah, that's what I said. Sponsored by the, the Taylor PTO, and all of her children, all four, and all four grandchildren were able to get off work and be, from daycare and all this, they were all there. She was totally surprised.
Yes, she was. It was a perfect tribute for all of her time as a reading specialist and her love for books and-
And each, each class-
Perfectly appropriate.
Somebody knew Debbie very well, who'd worked with her. So each class came and presented a book and was allowed to place it in the bus, and every single one was one of Debbie's favorite books. So there was tearful celebration.
Sure, she was touched.
Very cool.
It was, it was very.
Wow, thank you, Bavi. Is there, do you have anything else?
No, I think that's enough.
Okay, that's, we've got a lot of good things going on. We have homecoming coming up this weekend. The homecoming football game is Friday night, homecoming dance is Saturday night.
So we'll have a king and queen.
Yep, that is, that is happening, all the exciting stuff. And then, what else is going on?
I, I don't have my calendar in my head for this week.
Oh, come on.
I know. There's been so many different things, and even some of the parent nights that we've had here recently.
Well, the musical is coming up in mid-November.
That's mid-November.
And that's the Addams Family this year, yes?
Yes.
Very exciting.
And then all of our sports teams are also busy with all of their games and their meets and-
Mm-hmm. Lots of good stuff. Okay, and Bill, how is the borough school contract negotiation process coming along?
Good, we met, we met the other day. There's a few minor wording things going back and forth. Nothing that I think will be a showstopper. They had their team in, and they're already working on seminal documents, so they're ready to go. They basically, I think, within the next five or six days, will have the contract signed, so.
So we should be able to break ground by this month.
Hey.
Excellent. All right.
Is there an update on the, sorry?
Concessions, do you?
What you said.
The masonry should be done within the next week to two at the most. The roof is supposed to show up on the 15th. It's a trussed roof system, so that will go up actually pretty quick. The rough plumbing is approaching completion, which is the, the major part of the plumbing side of things. And once we have the roof on, then we can do electrical. So we're, we're still kind of pushing our way through, but quite honestly, the weather is not cooperating too much recently with, for the masons, because they can't obviously work in rain. So we're probably going to lose most of this week, unfortunately, from what we can see. Yeah, I, you know, if I had to guess, I would say as far as fully operational, definitely in the spring. By the time we get done this fall, I'm not sure it's worth lighting it up and then having to just blow it all back out again, because it's not something we're going to keep live during the winter. But I would say it's, as one of the masons says, next time it's a hurricane around here, that's the place to go. It's well-built, it's extremely durable, so.
That's good. Excellent. Okay.
I'd like to make this motion for the meeting to be adjourned.
Excellent. Anyone like to second that? Any further discussion? All those in favor of adjournment? 5-0-0, good night, everybody.